Five, which is pre-arranged. I saw it popped up, pre-arranged citizen participation, and we do have one citizen wishing to participate tonight. So with that, I'll have her introduce herself and have her a little presentation and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So nice to see all of you, meet some of you. And I wanted to sort of give you an overview as to what I'm going to be speaking about. And then officially ask for the planning committee to consider something that I think might be beneficial to the whole community. So a little background first. So my name is Ella Dunaiski and I live at thirty-four fifty-eight Broad Street, directly across the street from the wonderful historic train station. And we have actually owned this property since two thousand and four. We did a major renovation in two thousand and nineteen, February, we moved in literally a month before the pandemic shutdown. So we've always very much enjoyed the owning the property, we rented it. And then we decided that we would like to very much live in the city of Dexter. So we moved from Lockalpine, so not very far. And I was very involved, just so you have some perspective on my background. In Lockalpine, which has four hundred and forty homes, certainly not the Dexter sized neighborhood. But not only was I board president, I was in charge, involved with the Lake Restoration Committee, social chair. I was one of the founding key members of Webster Neighbors for Responsible Growth, which, as you know, has just been lauded for continued success in all the farmland that's been preserved. And in my professional life, just to give you an idea, because I think it sets the tone as to why I'm doing this. I currently am a director of college counseling at a school. But I have a professional background in the corporate world as well, where I serve as a product manager, national sales manager. And so I've got both sides covered as far as nonprofit, nonprofit, as well as I've got, you know, sort of the background to know what it takes to run and work with individuals and with something neighborhood or city. So as the pandemic has now hopefully taken a major halt, roads were obviously less traveled. And since we moved abroad, some of these issues that I really honestly didn't actually know, here comes the train. It became very evident after watching things get back to normal, which is, thank God, wonderful. But there were some major issues that we started encountering, and I bring this to your attention because Broad Street is this amazing group of neighbors and amazing community, and we are officially by my daughter called Townies. So the things that have kind of occurred, and I'm keeping track, and I'm just bringing to your attention, things that we've noticed really are more pertinent because it impacts all of us. It impacts our safety, it impacts our health, it impacts our environment, it impacts noise, it impacts a lot of different things. But number one is the excessive speeding that seems to be kind of the reason that so many of us are not only concerned, but there's a lot of other kind of continuous speeding that seems to happen. So in doing some investigation, I found that we have one stop sign, I'm sorry, one speed sign, it's a twenty-five mile an hour posted sign. Now, we happen to live at the V where both the railroad people coming up from Huron, and then of course, everyone coming down third, loves to figure out that now that nobody's looking, let me just gun it and run up the road. Because by the time I get to the light, I'm gonna have to wait for that light. So I'm gonna gun it, and I'm gonna make sure that I take a few people with me. So excessive speeding has been noted by myself, by my neighbors, by the kids. I can say that that's been a major concern, is the speeding. There is one stop sign and the rolling stop sign, I didn't put it in the presentation, but I videotaped it. Two back-to-back gravel haulers that just cruise right through the stops, through the stop sign. And a second one, just like gunning it after they cruise through it. So again, I would love to give you drone footage, video footage, but I just share with you my collection of information. The second thing that sort of has really kind of catapulted the reason we want to have this conversation is because border-to-border trail, when there was initial conversation done back in two thousand and fifteen with the economic development, and Michelle, I have your sort of interesting words where, you know, we're gonna make this a healthy environment and a wonderful community and walkability. Well, yes, but border-to-border trail was just probably somebody's vision, and here we are years later. And yes, the roads are marked somewhere up on, over by the railroad tracks as you come up from metro parks. But I can guarantee you that there's hundreds of bikers that come up from Huron, the bike clubs, individual families that are just trying to enjoy Dexter, and they come down and between the traffic and between looking at how they can manage, which way do I go? I don't know. Go this way, I can, I would love to quote you on how many ways, no, I think it's this way. Anyway, so there's lots of interesting things, watching bikers and pedestrians trying to collide or not collide with cars. Truckers and motor vehicles are often the ones that I observed excessively driving. And I have been personally, while my husband was trying to cross the street, honked at for trying to cross the street. And then my husband turned around and said, would you slow down? You know, there's obviously a limitation here of being a resident and someone that's trying to accommodate a healthy environment for all pedestrians and, yes, vehicles. Truckers with the noise control. So the issue with the noise control is I can tell that you're downshifting, and when you're not using your brakes, you're downshifting, and you hear the and it gets louder and louder, because that's what they're doing. They're trying to avoid really conserving the way that they do it. So I think that the speed limits, the accessibility for pedestrians. I have noticed that on Main Street coming into Dexter, we have had quite a few people stopped by the sheriff because they have exceeded the thirty, twenty-five mile an hour, and so there's lots of speeders that have been pulled over. But somehow Broad Street seems not to be the case. So there was one time that I noted that there was a sign that was put up, and it moves, how fast are you going? That seemed to catch someone's attention, but it was not consistent. And now I know the sheriff, I've watched him, he sits behind the new city hall. And when he catches them rolling through the stop sign, he's sighted, and in your minutes, it shows how many people were sighted. But the speed is still one that majorly impacts all of us that live on this street. The young families that try and cross, there's lots of families that are living on the street and more and more growing to find ways to enjoy the life in Dexter. So those are, I think, mostly the major concerns. But I wanted to say that safe and the ability for us to be looked at. We recently read the complete streets, the law that was enacted, and then the planning commission did such a beautiful job. And we are considered village residential, we're not considered village commercial. So then I also talked to the transportation department who said, you know, your road, Broad Street, is not really a deemed truck route. It's not the county, it's the city that has decided that that's the truck route. And I said, how do I know that? He said, check your truck route sign. On the back of my truck route sign that's parked out here, there's a little symbol, and it says the city of Dexter has put that up, not the county. So I get it, I get it. And I know that it's a major north and south thoroughfare, but really? So what happens is these individual truckers, speeders are cutting through, they don't spend their dollars here. They don't necessarily, these gravel trucks are not stopping at the funeral home or the two dentists on my street, okay? They're not. They're cutting through, and they're making their way fast through this town, polluting it, causing noise, causing a lot of distraction and safety issues for all of this street. But more importantly, for all of Dexter. So I think that the bigger picture that I'm trying to bring, and I did contact Mike, and I know Mike, I did see him on here somewhere. But I formally am coming to request that there be, both to the planning commission, but also noted, and I will be making a presentation to the city council, that I'm requesting a performance, a formal study to be done of this issue, because I think Dexter is not the sleepy little community that we want to protect it from. I want it to thrive, I want it to continue, but we need to be looking seriously at taking this and rerouting this truck stop that is now the massive thoroughfare. And I know that there are concerns for lots of different reasons, but bikers, pedestrians and families, walkability, safety, the quality of the roads, yes, but we should not be a drive-through for those that do not abide by our concerns or really take time to appreciate where we live. So I wanted to bring those specific attention or points to the committee, to the planning commission. Again, request a specific study to be done to revisit the availability for a truck route. And whether this is the right place, we have two roundabouts, and I know I looked at the truck map, and it stops at Baker Road, and there's no purple line that shows running through the city of Dexter. But in essence, we have given them permission, and they don't pay a toll, they pollute, they definitely harm the environment. And I'm certainly a wonderful, you know, example that I love where I live, but I think we need to really have this formally looked at. So I bring this to the planning commission's attention. And so I just wanted to be someone that is a voice of reason, but someone that also is expressing a hope and a wish to continue living in this wonderful community and be a participant. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation. Of course, as you probably know, we don't react instantly to the comments, but we do appreciate it, we listen to it as well. So we appreciate you taking the time to participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so moving right along, reports of officers. Item five on the agenda, really not too much, we did participate, Tom Phillips, myself, Kyle, Michelle, Mike. Mayor Keigho, who else, Lee Wa was there? Who else was there? Oh yeah, sorry, I forget, at Silo Township, so as planning commissioners, like I said, your planning commissioner reps, myself, Tom, and Kyle Marsh, we did go to the Silo Township to offer them some feedback on the Silo Township master plan. So we did have a meeting with them, their consultants, which I thought was really pretty helpful, it was good to get together with that group. I think that they did make a number of kind of changes and result to some of our comments that we had previously expressed. But there's a lot of stuff they're planning, so if anybody hasn't taken a look at that plan yet, please do, so it is interesting. And that was it for the chairman report, so I'll go around for other commissioners, is anybody, oh, I see a hand up, perfect, Commissioner Hill.
The ZBA meeting, at the ZBA meeting, we addressed a, an appeal for the addition of a breezeway between the house and the garage at the building directly south of the post office. The reason for the appeal or the request was that the garage is non-conforming, it's within a few feet of the property line. And therefore, doing anything requires, requires it to come to us for approval, and we approved it. And that was the only thing we had on the agenda.
Was that a res, what use are they planning to put in there?
It's a, Michelle could help me here, but it's a business of a lady from Chelsea.
It's Pro, Proven Kitchen is moving from where they are on Broad Street over to this new property that she bought, yeah, Cassandra Provenzano.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, from the ZBA. Anything else from our boards and commissions? Their planning commissioners, some see other hands up at this time, so council ex officio, Alaa.
Okay, sorry, I never know if you're lumping me in there or if I'm waiting.
Yeah, you've got a special slot.
Okay, well, just a couple of things that, you know, we voted on since last meeting, one of them you already made reference to, but I'm pretty sure we voted on this after we met last, which was the return to in-person meetings in September for all the boards and commissions, and we are still sort of, oh, so it'll be at St. Andrews Hall. St. Andrews Hall, St. Andrews Church, not, we're not going to Detroit. But we're still sort of working through the details of that and how that might look in a hybrid form for some members who don't feel comfortable attending meetings or can't for certain reasons, because we are still under the Washtenaw County emergency orders, so that is still available to people until the end of the year, at least right now. So anyway, we're sort of monitoring, you know, what may or may not change, but that is what we voted to do. And then we also voted to move forward with hiring Justin Brier as the city manager, so we did officially vote on that contract. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Alaa? Council business? Questions, all right, Michelle, your community development report.
Okay, so you've got my report in front of you, and before I go into the couple of updates that I have, do you have any questions for me? I'm confident that you've all read this report with super interest, so. I don't see any hands, so I'm gonna move on, excuse me. The Second Street Phase One, that's the first thing in my report. We will probably start talking about this as far as Phase Two, maybe later in the year, beginning of next year. The one thing I want to make sure is that not only planning commission, but the people in that area that on Second Street and then the feeder streets, they don't get confused. This is a, this is a two-phase project that's gonna happen. Phase One is not a road reconstruction. It is just a water main replacement and some sidewalks going in. And currently, the city engineer is meeting, and DPW are meeting with the different residents to kind of help them understand what's going on and why this is just a limited scale now. We'll come back for what's designated in the master plan as a future visioning for that Second Street corridor. I am working on, or staff, I should say, staff is working on a P E V station regulations. Show of hands, how many people know what P E V means? Okay, plug-in electric vehicles, they're coming to Dexter. And while this is not as urgent as the small cell ordinance that council just took on for the general code, there is a certain amount of urgency because it is a commercial property owner that would like to get these installed. And because there are grant funds for private property owners, including residents, to get these, to have these stations, we're going to try and move this along as quickly as possible, but with as much, knowing that there's a lot of education that's gonna have to go into this, just like we did with the ADUs. But it cannot take as long as it did with the ADUs, and that's more on staff than planning commission. So you'll see, you'll see an education piece at your next meeting, a presentation, and then a draft ordinance for feedback and discussion, and maybe a public hearing by November or December. The other zoning amendment that's gonna come to you doesn't have the same urgency, but it is something that we're going to need to do, and that is the small cell facilities that are subject to zoning review. Those would be ones in the right-of-way that don't qualify under the state act for automatic permit and the ones that are on private property. Most of the time, small cell facilities, small cell wireless providers do not want to do the private property anymore. They don't want to deal with the leases and the annual payments and all of that, that's why there's a right-of-way. That's why the state minimized what local municipalities can do. So I'll bring that forward for you next month, so you can at least see a draft and start to understand what's going on with that. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Michelle?
Doesn't look like it. On behalf of staff, I just want to say we are so happy that Justin has been voted and confirmed as the new city manager.
Hey, great, how long, how long has he been with the city? Seems like a while.
He started about a year after I did, so I'm going on my, this is coming into, I've been here seven years, so he's been here six.
Wow, great, yes, congratulations, Justin.
Thank you, I'll send that to him.
Yes, and now, some other hands, some more questions?
There was one other thing. We did get a request for a barrier-free space over in front of one fifty Jeffords. That will go to the DDA, since that was all part of the streetscape the DDA did, so they will be looking at that at their meeting this month. That's it, all done.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move to item seven, which is citizens wishing to address the commission. So with that, if we have any citizens wishing to address the commission, I see one already raised your hand, please state your name and address, and keep in comments three minutes of us, thank you.
Hi, Cole Miller, seven six five four Forest Street. Thank you for your attention, and it's not a real, I don't think it's the biggest piece of business in front of. But I just, in reading the packet about Millennium Place, I just had a question about how they came upon the name. I did a Google search for Millennium Places, and it turns out that there's a lot of them. They all seem to be apartment complexes, there's Denton and Texas and Muncie and Charleston, Illinois, and all over the place, these places called Millennium Place. And I assume that in all those places, it's probably no more of a meaningful name there than here. And so presumably, they want this development to last and to connect with the community. And I was just wondering why such a generic name, and you know, are they just supposed to be conjuring a mental image for marketing for, you know, marble countertops and modern appliances, when you say millennium? But it just, you know, we've got places like Grandview or Huron View, Dexter Crossing, if we're naming a school, it's called Creekside. It just seems like there's more effort sometimes to put into the developments. And we'd be interested in hearing if any representatives later on in the meeting from Millennium Place were here. Thanks.
Thank you, and I think that question actually did come up during our discussions the first time around. So it may come up again as well during this discussion. So is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? See more of their hands up at this time? All right, we will move to old business. So the only item on our old business is a care to cure office building. So that was one, as you guys have known, we've seen a couple of times already, so the last one was postponed for some elevation changes. And we did make all the other, we had a series of judgments to make as a planning commission, so we have signed off on those. So really, what we've got in front of us tonight is a presentation on these revised elevations. And there are a couple of issues that have that were outstanding last time that have already been addressed, if you've read through the comments. So with that, I think, do we want to have a staff presentation first, Michelle, or have Megan?
Mike, Mike is going to take care of this for you.
Again, Mike, okay, Mr. Mike, could you give us your little presentation, please?
Sure, so as Matt mentioned, the applicants have provided updated floor plan elevation and rendering sheets that are on pages fifty-four to fifty-six of your packet, as well as an updated building material samples, it's on page sixty-three. So at the previous meeting, the board or the commission voted in support of all the requested waivers. That was for driveway alignment, for approval of credits for trees and waving some required shrubs, as well as waiver of the loading space requirement and streetlight requirement. The applicants also indicated they'd be willing to work with staff on identifying alternate landscape or tree species or planting species from rows of Sharon and white pine. There may have been some discussion about the dedication of that thirty-three-foot portion of the right-of-way, but perhaps that's something that could be confirmed tonight and is recommended as a condition of approval, should the planning commission choose to recommend it. However, as Matt also mentioned, the action was postponed because of some concerns raised about the building's compliance with the Dexter and Arbor Road corridor architectural standards, specifically fifteen B O two D one and three, having fairly strong language requiring roofs be pitched in a way that mirrors other buildings on the corridor. There's also a requirement that rooftop mechanical equipment be screened for public view. So following that meeting, the applicants provided draft elevation updates to the pre-application committee for feedback. And while their first draft included some additional facade materials, such as siding, the pre-app committee members recommended they revert back to a simpler design palette and stick with the brick and stone that was originally proposed. And so the unresolved, the updated elevations included in the packet tonight, that include a new or a mancered roof feature over what was previously a flat roof. And there's been a minor change in the, what was originally a pyramid roof feature, it's now what I described in the memo, maybe there's a more precise for it as an open gable or box gable feature. Those were the two significant changes. Overall, the pre-application committee felt that the design was an improvement, but they did provide some specific or some comments or additional suggestions for minor changes that staff summarized as a need for additional facade modulation, specifically under that of now gable roof. Those suggestions are included in the staff report. And they were that more variation may be needed in the building facade, such as the previously proposed vertical brick columns that extend from the stone material to the roof line or to the roof, potentially reverting back to the previously proposed pyramid roof feature. And adding roof overhangs may be an improvement. So staff command that, or while the remaining action that the commission will need to take are determination with compliance of the Dexter and Arbor Road corridor standards. So there is a comparison of the current elevations and the previous elevations on page eleven of the packet. So in reviewing those applicable standards, again, roof shape and as well as the facade modulation. If the commission feels that improvements are needed, staff recommend citing specific issues, the applicable corridor requirements, and the steps that the applicants will need to take to comply with the design standards. And some good direction and specific examples came from the feedback from the pre-application committee. So other than that, again, all the other requested waivers and determinations have been acted on, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
I think, thank you, Mike, maybe we'll have, I believe the petitioner, the applicant wants to make a brief presentation? Is it either Allison or Mr. Kerr?
Matt, hi, everybody, it's Rob Kerr from Metric Group Architects. A pleasure to be here tonight with you folks. Matt, can you run the PowerPoint that I sent out, or can I?
I probably can't, but staff can, I think, if staff could probably bring that up, if.
Mike will do it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody should be, can everybody else see that? Everybody good? Okay.
Okay, if we just go to the next slide, this is our team, AR Brower and Metric Group Architects and Metro Consulting Engineers. Just as, I think it's worth going through just again where we are and where we're situated. If you look in the upper left-hand corner there, it's seven thirty-nine zero Dexter and Arbor Road. If you look in the upper left-hand corner there, it's seven thirty-nine zero Dexter and Arbor Road. And across the street from the school, we're also down the corridor from, you know, La Fontaine and from bushes and from the bank and Dexter Crossing is to the right on that sheet. We go to the next slide. Zoom in on the site itself. The garage has been taken down, but in general, the lots vacant. And I think we've talked about that a little bit, but next slide. Okay, so when we first brought the project to you folks, it was a little larger. It was a two, two-phase project, a few more parking spaces. And then out of all our conversation, there was a lot of conversation about saving the berm and a lot of the trees that are there that are buffers right now between the residential behind us and to the, to the, I guess, the east of us. So the, so the building got smaller. We had made some changes to the southeast corner of the building to give it a little more interest in modulation. At that point, as you folks have heard, it was a pyramid shape on, on the building. And there'd been some conversation about simplifying the building and perhaps more modulation, which you'll see tonight is we've made some changes to that. We hope you like those changes. We believe it fits within the corridor quite well. There are two tenants in the building, one of thirteen hundred and the other one will be forty-three hundred square feet. Twenty-eight feet high now is what the building height is. And that's the highest pitch of the roof itself of the new, the new roof that you'll see on the building. We have green space. We have rainwater infiltration. We do not have underground retention. We have above ground open, as you'll see in the north corner of the property. We are connecting to the public walkway and we are saving the existing berm and landscaping, as we've all talked about. We're down to twenty-four parking spaces now and two bicycle parking. Next slide. This is the rendering of that plan. As you can see, we're showing for one of the, one of the comments we had before was will the air conditioning units be shielded? And in fact, they are, when you look at the renderings, which you can see on the model, we have four units sitting on that roof. And the new, the new pitch at the front, that's, that's fine. You can go to the, the next slide. Thank you. We have taken the cube to be a little more, what we would say residential with a pitch in the front. So we took that cube in the front and, and made it more of a residential look. And put the hip roof around the lower level and then the gable roof at the front. Again, landscaping will be pretty heavy, as you can see, and we think that that looks pretty good. So this is an overall view. If you go to the next slide. This is, this is coming from the east on Dexter and Arbor Road. Go to the next slide. Coming from the west, if you will, coming the other direction. Again, one of the comments that we had heard earlier was to add, if you remember, on the west side, we did have exit doors on that side, but it wasn't as modulated it is here with glass and exit doors. So when you're coming down the street, you look past the daycare center, you'll be, you'll see this facade as it's indicated here. Next slide. These are just detailed shots of the building, again, using rich materials, using stone and brick. And there's just a little bit of ephesus at the top. And we're down below the five percent roll. Let's go to the next slide. I think it's important to also see some of the architecture that's down the street so that everybody's reminded what's there. So you'll see the Chevy dealership and the small building that's out in front of bushes. Next slide. There's bushes there and then across the street is the shopping center. And more of the architecture that's there. One more slide. As we get closer and then directly across the street at the bottom image is the school. From, from our point of view, what I wanted to do tonight is to, to go through some of the requested requirements as we go down that street. And I wanted to, to just for the overlay district and just kind of check through what we've done. We're orienting our building to the public street. I know we've had conversations about the entries. We've moved the entries to make them more prominent in the building. The blank walls are not facing any of the public street. We are, the, the building facades are divided through architectural treatment, as you'll see on the building. We have modulated at a couple of different ways. We've had the, the piers go all the way up. We've had the piers come down. And what we've tried to do is to, to hear what we've been asked to do, which is to simplify the building. The height and width ratio does not exceed one to two. The facade modulation creates shadows and lines, and I think that that's been successful for this small building. Again, remember it's five thousand square feet. The use of engaged columns to express the structural system is there. Horizontal and vertical divisions and texture materials are there. Divided facades in the storefronts and visual separations and display windows, that is also there. If you go to the next slide, please. Provide projections such as balconies, cornice over, cornice covered entrances, pergolas, arcades and colonnades. We do have, we do have cornice. We have canopies at the entries. We also have window treatment and of course, the, the undulation of the brick in and out for the shadow lines. Variation of roof lines, the use of dormers, overhangs, arches, step roofs, gables and others. We have that, which we've just added. The new building will set back. We've all talked about that. We've brought the building forward to the street as required and requested. The relationship to existing structures, I think it fits well with, with the surround to the mass and the proportions of the building and the roof line and the windows and doors. All the architecture that we show you on the street, elements from all that is in this, in this project. Next. The number of windows, location and sizes are oriented towards Dexter and Arbor Road. And we've got a ton of windows and the building, the building, I think, looks quite well, quite nice from Ann Arbor Dexter. And I think it will be a very busy little building. The public sidewalks are connecting now to the, to the property. And then there was a streetlight requirement, but I think we've, that's not applicable here. We've talked about that not being a part of this project. Architectural features such as archways, colonnades, towers, cornices and peak roof lines, we have that. Building entrances shall be to utilize windows, canopies and lunnings. We have that. Roof shape and materials are architecturally compatible with the district and show enhanced streetscape, gable hip and roof. Gamma roofs are encouraged. We're doing that. The surfaces, surface planes of the walls were over forty feet long in length will be varied and they are varied with the treatments of architectural lines and buildings and windows and entrances. And the side and rear of all the buildings, again, this is a requirement the visible from residential zoning in the district such as facades. So we constructed the quality of the front, which is not applicable. We're so far away from the residential portion of the, of the building. Next, next slide. The building is located in the corner, it's on a corner lot that's not applicable. And all mechanical equipment is being shielded from public view. And exterior materials and treatments will be consistent with the arc. Any individual side of principle, side of a principal building shall have at least eighty percent of the side constructed of brick, stone, siding, glass and other materials. And we follow that and we are less than five percent of, of ephesus. Next. The bricks are fully veneered and we have high quality materials. We're using brick and stone. And I think that that meets our requirements. And again, here's a listing of the materials that are asked to be used and we're using all of those. Preferred accent materials, we are using precast and we have some cast stone, natural stone accents and glass accents. Next. We've done the one hundred percent schedule. We've shown you what the percentages are of the building materials. And then we've also brought that into the signs and landscaping. They're all, they're all oriented in compatible, compatible with the building. There is no national tenant, so that doesn't follow. We're not, that's not applicable either. So we're hoping that you see this revised project that you will approve it tonight. We've followed all the standards. We preserved trees and berm. We've expanded the bio-retention area. We've removed expansion space in, in another phase that we were planning on before. So we could save the berm. We added a solar carport. We've added gable roof and raised facades. We have added a mansard roof. We've added a shingle roof. Shingles to the roof. We've changed the building colors, provided high quality materials. We've offset and raised the southeast corner of the building to express a tower to make it more interesting looking. We've simplified and deep detailing of the materials. We've moved the drive to the east. We've moved the building to the south. And we provide pedestrian entrances and we have moved the entries. So again, we respectfully request that this be approved tonight and we're looking forward to a positive review. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Appreciate that. The slideshow is very, very helpful to help illustrate the changes in the process that you guys went through. So I appreciate that in the packet as well. Okay, was there anybody else from the petitioner's team that wanted to? I believe that seems to have covered everything, so I think that looks good for now. So with that, we as a commission have, I don't think there's anybody else that wanted to, I see Allison Bishop, but no, not, do you have anything to add right now, Allison? No, okay. Okay, so sorry, with that, so we do have, obviously the information within our packet on page ten of that. I bet, yes, labels page ten, there is a suggested motion. And well, I guess with that, we'll open it up for planning commission discussion. And if there is a sample motion, if somebody would like to make a motion, otherwise we open it up for this discussion now, please.
Start with the motion.
That's what I was suggesting, but last time, I know we are a little bit more uncomfortable, but I think if we can put it out there now and, and start our discussion after that, it'd be the best.
Absolutely.
And when you'd like to put forward a motion.
Matt, Tom's got his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Yes, see. Okay. Based on the information provided by the applicant staff, CWA, OHM, and DF, DAFD and reflected in the minutes, this being the planning commission finds that AP two zero two zero two one dash one nine PSPR care to cure seven, three, nine, zero Dexter and Arbor Road preliminary and final site plan revised dated June fourth, twenty twenty-one. Facade elevations and rendering sheets, A two point one and A five point one revision dated July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And sheet A eight point zero revision date July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Meets the requirements of Article twenty-one of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance and recommends approval to city council subject to the following determination and conditions. And just basically items one through six is noted below.
Okay, thank you. So there's a motion put forward by Phillips. Is there support? See, I, I see Roberts with the hand up, so support Roberts. Okay, so with that, we have discussion. Open it up. Tom, is your hand still up or?
Oh, yeah, I'm putting it back up, I guess.
Okay, well, so Commissioner Wise first, I guess, and then, and then Mr. Phillips.
Whoops.
Okay, sorry about that. So the only, the only concern that I really had, which I think I wasn't at the last meeting, and I think you guys did a fantastic job. On the backside of the building, where they're putting the mechanicals. I know right now the berm and the trees covering everything looks fantastic. You can't see anything on the backside. I'm a little concerned if in the winter time, if the condos behind there will be able to see, because I don't know the, the exact height on the backside, if they'll be able to see the equipment on the back of that roof without the, the manzard being extended on the, is that the north side of the building? Yeah, but that's, 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 that's a concern for me, because, because I know in the, and I had it written down, the fifteen B point O two D seven, all mechanical equipment shall be shielded from public view.
Okay, so we can, if the petition is the architect, I don't know, is Mr. Kerr, are you able to address that right now? Do you know as far as the angle of a vision from the residences in the back?
So, so, yeah, the, the building's quite a distance back from everybody on the, from that back area. And like you said, there's a lot of trees there too. So, and, and the way the property works, I think that it's, it, I guess, if you, if those trees weren't there and everything was open, you may be able to see a little bit of it, but it's, it's not like you're gonna be, you know, because it's such a distance back that you're going to be able to see it all. Those units, you know, they're four feet, four and a half, five feet tall on the building and, you know, clearly gets every, all the, the other three sides, it clearly gets blocked. But you know, if this becomes some kind of an issue that we have to, you know, cover that back area, if that makes you feel comfortable, we can do that.
And I think the distance, there may be, I was looking for my scaled site plan and have it, could I be curious? Because that distance is well over a hundred feet, I believe, from.
It, it, it is, Matt, and I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me, what that is.
And maybe, I, I saw Allison's hand. Did, did you want to address that issue? Allison, your hand just went up.
You're muted.
Oh, you're still muted.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if someone had to unmute me. The elevation at the property line is about nine nineteen and at the back of the building, it's about nine seventeen. So between the height of the building and the grade change, it's pretty unlikely that you're going to see anything on that roof.
That, that also helps, but we can bring that up as, as well, Commissioner Wise, in discussion if that, that's a larger issue. So, okay, so with that, Mr. Phillips?
Um, yeah, I, I'm comfortable with, with those units are very low and they're, and they're, and they're far, set far back on the roof. I, I don't think there's, I mean, you, you're talking about a long way away and something that's gonna, you know, if it's a foot, I, I doubt it's, it's gonna make any kind of impact. I mean, if this was a lab or something and you're talking about giant units up on frames and things like that or a heavy industrial building like MC three, then, then I think we'd have an issue. But to me, that's a non-issue. I, I commend the applicant for, and their, and their architect for the improvements. the improvements in the building design. I, I think we can do a little better with that, or do a little better with that vent in the front that seems kind of lost there, floating on the roof, that, you know, if you could connect that to something, or make it longer, or do something with it, give it some character, it looks like it's, it's kind of a little weird, little afterthought there, but otherwise, I think overall, the design is, is much improved, and I, I thank everybody involved.
Thank you. Additional, additional planning commissioner thoughts and concerns, comments? Yes, Kyle Marsh.
Thanks, Matt. Um, yeah, I think I, I like a lot of what's going on. I guess we're just gonna say, I mean, yes, I think you did a good job of bringing up the stuff that was improved. Some of the stuff to me, which is still kind of throwing me off, is I feel like this cornice on this new parapet gable is a little bit, I mean, you just got like, what a big flat piece of one-by-eight at the top there. There's really no, if you're doing EFS, I've definitely seen Brower do some nicer cornice moldings with his EFS, so I would like to see a better cornice up there. I mean, it's just a freeze board now. There's not even a fascia or, or, you know, or vice versa. Those columns are, I don't know, it's just like a lot of flat brick there. Some shadow relief, maybe, you know, like you've got this whole piece of this red brick, tenant one and tenant two. I'm looking at that big front facade, and it's just, you know, would it, would it be impossible to put some kind of brick modulation in there, or you know? I mean, some architecture there, because it seems like a big spot that is kind of a missed opportunity. You know, and if you could fill that in, I know some of those details can come later, too, as you're going through the design and refining it, too, so I wonder if there was anything planned for that what that might look like.
Okay, thank you. We'll maybe get back to the applicant and some questions in a minute to address that, but I know that, Karen, yes, Karen Roberts, your hand?
Hang on, Karen.
You're still muted.
You're still muted, Karen.
Wait, one more. We don't have to worry about muting.
All right, I'm not muted now, right? Okay, just the, the part where the driveway hits the property line, we were, one of the requests is that we grant some sort of waiver there, and I think it's just where it flares out. Do we have that authority, or is that something they have to get an agreement with here in court for?
Wasn't that what we granted? Didn't we grant that?
Yeah, it's, it's the, the approach is within the right-of-way, and the requirement is that the approach be completely in front of the property, so it is public right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on the architecture, or? So I, I guess, I, I mean, I don't see anybody else, right? Oh, Karen, right. Johnny, so the only thing I was, I was just gonna add, I really appreciate all the changes. I mean, I, I, one thing, though, I, the only thing I did kind of is, I think Commissioner Phillips touched on it, the little kind of event in the middle, and that might go with kind of Kyle's comments. It does seem a little like, I like that, and I like the, all that brick, and that looks good, but it does seem a little lost, or like small, or something, a little bit like out of place, and again, I'm not an architect, so I don't know what would make that look any better, and I wouldn't, I'm not going to not vote for the project because of that, but it does seem like maybe it could be bigger, or a different, just kind of seems a little bit out of place there, but again, that's just kind of a side. Other than that, I appreciate the improvement, so and all the work that's been done on this proposal. Other thoughts on the architects? We've given a little bit of feedback, but it, I don't necessarily hear any deal killers here, but oh, another hand up. Good, Kyle, take it away. And you're muted, Kyle, if you're talking. We can't see you, so.
How about now?
There we go.
Perfect. So, you know, then maybe it's, I don't know, I feel like this, this part has grown taller as well. I don't know, is the scale of that too tall?
It was a little, is it height the same?
I feel like we're getting
A little bit taller, and maybe Bob should explain.
Yeah, so we've got all this brick now above all this glass, and it looks so heavy when you don't modulate and put some type of, you know, engaged columns, or you know what I'm saying? Like, there's no detail on that brick, so it looks like a heavy chunk of brick up there. Maybe the scale's too big, or maybe it needs more detail, but.
So, if I may, Matt.
Yes, please.
So on the height of the the front facade, it got a couple feet higher than it was before with the pyramid, because the mansard that was coming from the sides had to die into something that was of substance, so the, so the front got a little bit taller. You know, the, certainly, we can talk about the venting, that vent, it could be, you know, it can be round, if that's something that, you know, I know that's down the street. I've seen that down the street. If that's something that makes people feel more comfortable, or it can be a little bit larger. The, the original plan, as you remember, the, there were those piers came all the way up to what, what we had was the pyramid, if you will, and that broke the facade up. When you bring it up, you could bring it up just below that vent there, and then just have sort of a triangle up above it, if that makes folks feel comfortable. That's something that could be done, I think, for sure on this. I, I would do it on the, on the south facade, but I wouldn't change on the east facade. I think that those two are different facades, and I think that if the massing feels too heavy, or too, you know, there's not enough breakup of that, we could raise that and have it stop just below the, maybe in line, so there is a full triangle.
Other thoughts? I, I like that idea breaks up that kind of the brick space, but that's, I'd like to hear other, please, other comments. Yes, Commissioner Marsh, you have your hand up first, and then?
So you're thinking a triangular vent instead of a rectangular? Just kind of?
Yeah, I could, yes, you could do a triangular vent. I mean, the vent, the vent there, as you know, in a, right, they're there to to ventilate an attic is what they're there for. And a lot of, you know, if you call it a house, a house has those, and people are used to seeing those, either a rectangle or a triangle.
I personally like a rectangle on it. I think that looks good, but, you know, I wonder if we could get some kind of, you know, it's just stuck in the brick. There's no soldier course above it. There's no row lock, you know, there's no brick detail around that thing. It's just kind of plastered on this. You know, like.
Yeah, I understand.
Brick detail.
Yeah.
You know, a budget buster.
That's, that's not a budget buster. We could do that.
Thank you. Other commissioner feedback on the architects? So we heard, we did hear an offer to slightly modulate that front elevation with kind of bringing a brick stanchion on the front, kind of up to, I believe, it looked like, kind of right below that, that vent area. It seems like kind of equal with the other ones, I believe, and it kind of call out that center area where that where the vent is, is kind of a separate kind of triangle distinction. I think it kind of sets it out, but, so that was the proposal. Do we hear support for that, Commissioner Wise? You have some comments?
I, I would like to see that happen. I think that would make the building look better, and it would look less blocky up at the top. If they could modulate it with a little bit of different variety.
Okay, Commissioner Hill?
Um, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see that. But if, in fact, that comes to us, those changes can simply be handled by staff. Am I correct? Because I'm basically good with it as it is.
Yes.
It's a change you could recommend, and, yeah, and then council would, would review them incorporated into the plan.
Okay.
I agree. And Commissioner Marsh, is that a new hand, or was that up from before?
Um, that was the old hand, but I did actually want to follow up on the cornice itself. You know, to my eye, especially on that gable end one, the rest I'm not as concerned about, but that upper cornice does seem a bit undersized for the, you know, the overall height of that facade. So I, I think if you did include a, I mean, I don't know, but I feel like if it was detailed with the right pieces of trim, it may be the right size after all.
Okay.
I did a little quick Photoshop. I'll send out to planning.
That's good. Um. A little more feedback from there. Any, anything else on the architecture here? Anything else? We do have a motion on the table that would be, it, it would be for approval to pass this along, and I know Commissioner Phillips, since you made the motion, and we were talking about a kind of a modification there, would you be comfortable with that, or, or no, adding that in, that extending that kind of brick column up? If you were following our train of thought on that?
Um. I, I guess I would have to see. I, I don't know. But I, I guess, I, again, as you mentioned before, I don't see any, like, you know, issues that are that should sidetrack the, the vote. But I think if the applicant wants to make a few tweaks, and however that process works, I'm sure that would be fine.
Okay, so we could, we could go forward with the motion as presented, then. So, okay, I see, wait, oh, wait, Commissioner Wise, yes.
Still gonna bring up that I still think that they should have that back corner covered, because I want to make sure that it's actually covered from public view. I don't want to guess it should be, or I, I want it to be covered, because that's what our requirements are.
Okay, so, okay, so other thoughts about that, and I, I know that was expressed, and we didn't discuss, so the architect said they, they could add that. Are there other thoughts on that from the commissioner? I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable without it, but again, I wouldn't, I would want to see, you know, whatever makes the commission most comfortable with the project to move forward. So if there are additional, Commissioner Roberts?
I'm just wondering if they remove closer to the front, because that, the roof line in the front would, is, I think is tall enough to shield them. And then, then, because it's what I think Dustin, what you're, what he's, Dustin's worried about is that the neighbors to the, to the back, I, the north-south has not worked very well for me on this site, but that they're gonna be the ones who are gonna be looking at that. And if removed more, I'm, functionally, that may be a much bigger deal than I know, but if they were closer to the front, I think that would take care of the problem, as long as that the roof along the front is, is high enough.
Good. Okay, so I see our consultant, Megan has, has her hand up, so she may have something valuable to add.
Um. There's a lot of topography in between where the building is sited, and then where those adjacent neighbors are. There's a steep hill, there's tall, there, there's, you know, I would, based in my opinion, but I, I don't, I, you know, we don't, we don't have a study, a three-dimensional study of it, but looking at it in three dimensions, I would bet ninety-five percent that there's no way that you could see those those air handlers that are, those handlers that are proposed on the top of the building. However, I do also agree with Commissioner Wise's concerns. I think that I'm gonna defer to the architects on the planning commission as well. Maybe there might be another option where, as a condition of approval, during the winter months, it could be examined from the, from the, you know, by staff from, from the residents adjoining, whether they can see those handlers or not, and if they can, then the applicant's gonna screen them after the fact. I don't know whether that would be too onerous in terms of building construction, but I would hate for them to put it up if they didn't need to. Again, I don't know whether that is a cost-effective strategy to go to.
Okay, so, so interesting. Okay, so that's an option. Thank you. So I think, so I saw a couple more hands go up here, but Mike, do you have some, and I know Kyle, and I think Tom Phillips, Mike, do you want to add something?
Yeah, just some quick additions to Megan's comments. What, based on the landscape plan, I, I think there are not as many trees on the northern side of the lot. It's more shrubs varying roughly six feet or less in height, so screening, and again, it's hard to tell because of the topography, but screening could be more of a factor there. And then options available, as Megan mentioned, the applicants could provide a rendering that shows the view from that angle, or if it's, as has been discussed, they're willing, just go ahead and add a feature there, that, that's another option, too, but a place to start could be providing that additional rendering view.
Okay, so there's more feedback. I believe Commissioner Phillips and then Commissioner Marsh.
Um, I, I am not inclined to modify my motion to include that. I, those units are all single-story, and this is a tall structure relative to a residential, so that, that eve of those houses is probably at eight feet. And this thing is far above that, and they're gonna be looking up at it to see the edge of the roof. There's no way they're gonna see those units. And that's, it's, to me, it's a waste of the applicant's money, and, and I guess I wish they had, you know, it would be easy for us to tell if there was a, a, a model of it showing it, but I'm not inclined to modify my motion at this point.
Thank you. One more, I said, Mr. Kerr, the architect had your hand up briefly. Did you want to add something?
So the, the only, the only thing that I was thinking we could add, maybe a course or two, a block on that back wall, that would give more coverage. We wouldn't be putting a mansard there, but we would raise that parapet maybe a course or two.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so Commissioner Marsh, and then Commissioner Hill. You're, you're muted, if.
Okay, yeah, actually, it got answered, so I'm putting my hand in.
Okay, perfect. All right, so Commissioner Hill.
I think color makes a difference, too. If they're bright, and if they're silver up there, you'll see them. If you, just like anything else, you paint them black, they tend to disappear.
Okay, so, okay, so we've had some, so Commissioner Wise brought up a concern. So we've had some discussion around that. Again, I mean, the architect could add, they said, kind of a couple layers of, of brick, basically, why were you gonna kind of masonry on top, kind of to elevate that a little bit? But right now, we do have a motion on the table from Commissioner Phillips, so, which does not include that modification, so we can kind of go forward with that vote. And again, if that's, if that's voted down, then we can put up another motion that maybe would address some of those other concerns that would be out there, but right now, we do have a current motion on the table, so we will need to vote for that, or vote on that. So, but there's additional, so we've heard some feedback about, again, the front facade, the venting, the air conditioning units. So these are all items that even if this motion gets passed, I would hope that the consultant, the architects would look at to help kind of address these, because these will be noted. So Kyle, Dustin, and whoever brought up some concerns about that, I think these concerns are kind of noted through our discussion for planning commission, so even if this motion, I believe, i- if this, if this does get passed, and as it currently states, council will have this in there, so they will say that there was some concern about these. There was concern about the molding and those things along that line, so council will get kind of a summary of our comments to go along that. And Councilmember Hubbard is here as well, so she can help relay those parts of our discussion. So with that, Tom, did you want to add something, or is that, I think it's just still your hand up?
Oh, sorry about that. No, I'm all set, sorry.
That's what I thought. Okay, so additional comments. So we just have a motion forward to approve the plan as is. We've added a lot of comments. But the motion is as written on page ten, so with that, I don't see any other discussion or hands going up. I think we can take a roll-call vote on this, please. Ms. Jones?
Okay. Hill?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Yes. Okay, alright, that one is approved, go forward to council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time and patience on this, we appreciate that.
Thank you, everybody, we appreciate your help.
Thank you. Okay, so moving right along, new business, another site plan, the final PUD site plan, it's combined site plan review for Millennial Place. Which is, uh, located at seven nine six zero and seven nine five six Grand Street. Um, so with that, I believe we'll have a staff presentation first, followed up by, uh, one from the applicant.
We can, uh, why don't we start with Megan and, um, uh, Marcus and then, um. Well, actually, no, well, yeah, we can do it that way, Megan, Marcus, and then DAFD, and then I'll circle back. Um, with the summary and then the applicant can go.
Perfect, okay, alright, Megan.
Thank you, um, I'm gonna be a little shorter than usual because I have less to say than, um, the engineer does. Um, so just as a reminder, um, this is a final PUD site plan. You saw the preliminary, um, over a year ago, um, it is on seven nine six oh, seven nine five six Grant Street. Um, it's for a twenty-three owner occupied residential units with an enclosed area for twenty-six street. Twenty-six vehicles at the street level and the rear portion. And there are six parking spaces proposed on Grand Street and ten unenclosed parking spaces in the rear of the site. Um, the entries to the parking will be from Grand Street and from the alley, all units have pedestrian access to Grand Street in the parking area. Um, there'll be three townhouse units which have front doors on Grand Street and rear access to the parking lot. Remaining twenty units have, are on the second and third floors of the building and they're ranging in size. From seven hundred and forty-four square feet to fourteen, over fourteen hundred square feet, and those have entrances on Grant Street, Grand Street and parking area. Um, the architectural style essentially remains the same as it was before, um, except it's a little bit taller. Um, and there's patios added, um, in terms of area width and height, um, it complies with lot area frontage, the front and the side and the west. Um, from the east side, um, uh, the east side deviation, there's a. The east side setback, excuse me, there's a deviation required from, from the standard required. And there was a deviation in the rear as well, and those were approvals that you had, you approved those in the, um, preliminary PUD. Um, and there is a deviation required from the standard, um, for height as well, and I'll get a little bit into, more into that later. In terms of woodlands, there was nineteen trees on the site, uh, which are proposed for removal. We'll defer to staff on the analysis of those, they did an excellent job in their review, um, walking through what's on the site and why. It's removal and protection and whatnot. Um, in terms of the building location and site arrangement, as I said before, um, patios were identified on the preliminary, um, PUD plan. But they've been enlarged in this version and remain attached to the building and they're above grade. Um, they have decorative panels, fencing and gates, and that separates the public and the private space. Which is really something that was missing in the preliminary PUD. Um, the patios are attached and they're defined as open space. And therefore they're allowed in the required front yard set-back, so some of you may have looked at that and said, oh, that's not that setback that we agreed to. Um, but because of the way your definition of open space works, that structure doesn't qualify for the front yard setback. Um, so there's approximately fourteen feet of green space in the proposed area between the patio and the back of the sidewalk. And also, you'll know that as many streets in Dexter are, it's a pretty wide, um, right of way. And so there's a good amount of space in between, um, where the patio ends and where the sidewalk is. Um, the proposed east side back has actually been increased, um, to five point six two feet when it was five point three one feet on the preliminary plan. PUD plan, um, and also the proposed height of the building has been increased from thirty-five feet. To thirty-nine point five eight feet, and that was due to the fire department's request, um, for the driveway off of Grand Street to have clearance for a fire truck. Um, and we'll defer to the, um, of course, to the fire chief and to the applicant to, for more information on that. The main thing I wanna stress to you tonight in terms of your decision is. You'll need to find either tonight, tonight, or at the time when you, um, when you give a recommendation to the city council. Is that the final PUD plan with the changes that are, with the changes that are proposed. Is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plan, um, so we'd like you to keep that. That decision point in your mind as you go through, um, your deliberations tonight. This density and the amount of units has remained the same, so the traffic impact is the same as is the site access and circulation. Um, we'll defer to, of course, the, to the city engineer for existing facilities and services. Um, the parking plan has not been changed in the final BUD plan, however, we will note. Um, there's twenty-three bicycle parking spots either in racks or lockers. Um, and that, um, is something that, um, the city's been looking for. Um, so we wanted to applaud those things. Um, in terms of landscaping, there are a number of deficiencies. Um, the applicant's providing four street trees when the, um, lineal feet requires four point five two. Um, so that should be rounded up and there should be a fifth tree. Um, in terms of, um, parking spaces, um, the ratio requires. Um, the proposed forty-two parking spaces would require five trees. Um, the applicant does not provide those required trees. Um, it wasn't noted in our review, but something you could take into mind. Is that most of the parking spaces in the parking lot, a lot of them are covered. And therefore that traditional parking lot tree wouldn't survive there, it might not be appropriate. Um, so, um, and this being a PUD, you can also look at some waivers and whatnot. Um, so, um, also, so the, also. A detailed tree survey is needed to verify required vegetation, and again, um, staff's giving you a good report on that. Provide, and, um, we'd like to provide, we are requesting they provide the additional street tree. Um, we've noted the deficiency of the five parking lot trees, um, and also the trash enclosure dimensions are needed, um, since this is a final site plan. Um, the lighting plan was submitted, but it, um, needed to provide more detail on the light poles, including the height. And provide illumination levels at or below zero point one foot, what, zero point one foot, kit, foot candles. Um, there were a couple of things we noted, um. And terms of data required for final site plan. Um, details of protecting existing plant material during construction and location, um, details of mailbox clusters. Also, the engineer has noted that in their letter. Also, I wanna note, with the exception of the patios, the building elevations and floor plans for the proved buildings have been, uh, provided. And they, they appear to be acceptable and, and substantially compliant with what you originally saw in the preliminary PUD plan. Um, in our letter, on page seven of our letter and page one hundred and forty-seven of your packet. Um, there are the items, um, where, um, which were accepted by city council by their approval for the preliminary plan on July eighth, two thousand and nineteen. There are eleven of those, um, and those would be also things that he would look at in terms of that substantial compliance. Um, in terms of a draft PUD agreement that was not provided in the packet. Um, however, um, they should submit a PUD agreement to meet the requirements. Of the section twenty-two point one two, to be reviewed by the city attorney and final approval by city council. Um, however, um, you may note that you traditionally have not required that the planning commission see that at this point in time. In order for it to be passed on to the city, recommended to the city council. On a page one hundred and forty-eight of your packet, we have thirteen items, um, that we would recommend, um, with, or if. For final PUD site plan in terms of conditions. Again, um, staff has recommended, um, staff and engineers have a lot more after us and. Then our, our main point, again, I just wanted to reiterate is to discuss if, just for you to discuss if as presented. The final PUD plan is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary PUD plan. And those items that were, um, part of the. Part of that, um, approval that again are noted on page one hundred and forty-seven of your packet. And be happy to answer any questions, if not, turn it over to Marcus of OHM.
Um, well, we'll probably have some questions for you a little bit, but, um, if we can go over to Marcus right now, um, for your review, please.
Sure, you're gonna be okay? Yep, you're good. Okay, uh, good evening. So, um, as Megan mentioned, we. Do have a number of comments, a lot of them were, uh, housekeeping items or details. That really don't affect the, the site layout, uh, or the viability of the site, so I won't read through them all. We have them in the report.
Marcus, you're cutting out again.
Is it?
Yep. When his, uh, when his children are on their, their, their game consoles, it reduces his, um.
Yeah.
If you'd like, Don Detling could go next.
As I say, maybe we could go to Chief Detling then, really quickly while Marcus is getting back up.
Then Detling, are you there?
Are you there? Oh, yeah, perfect.
Good evening, Matt, how are you?
Good, how are you today?
I'm fantastic, it's been a while.
Awesome.
And for the rest of the commission, my name is Donald Detling, I'm the captain and fire marshal with the Dexter area fire department and, uh, city of Dexter's fire code official. Been so for many, many years, since two thousand and three, as I've had time to reflect, listen into, uh, the commission. Not been in front of you guys many times, but, uh, today may be an exception, um, Millennial Place, uh, my review. We've only done two reviews on this one, uh, the latest one was done on the twelfth of, twelfth, sorry, the twenty-second of July. We reviewed jointly with the, uh, OHM or the city engineers for water, uh, and hydrants. So we basically take the top part, they take the bottom part, or is in the water. As in the, the length of the pipes and the size and water dimensions and stuff like that. So, we basically review on where the hydrants are, where they need to be and provide comment on that. And utilizing, uh, our fire code and also the city standards. So that's why the comment is there, uh, cause we don't know the fire flow for, out of the two hydrant off Grand Street. That's why we're requesting a third hydrant, uh, off the alley, because the alley is a looped eight-inch water main. Opposed to where the Grand Street, one of the two hydrants are a dead end, and then the second hydrant is a looped hydrant. So that's my comment there. My comment on the, uh, fire protection ordinances, um, is when we developed the fire protection code for the city of Dexter. Uh, we were, and we still are concerned about water impervious surfaces. So the, the fire code since day one, uh, has had twenty feet as the minimum width for a fire code. Or I'm sorry, twenty feet minimum width for a fire la- access lane. Call it a rope, call it a street, call it whatever you want, call it an alley, uh, a fire access road is a. Drivable surface that we would use to get to and from a incident. So, in our fire protection code, it says twenty minutes, twenty feet unless the applicant requests a reduction to eighteen. So we have not yet had a, a request from Millennial Place to reduce that number from twenty to eighteen. So that's why that's still in there. Uh, and then going down the punch list, uh, no parking fire lanes, cause obviously if it's eighteen or twenty feet, they can't be parking on either side of that. Uh, just because it is a reduction, the rest of it is housekeeping, uh, knock boxes, which you've all seen, lockable fire department connections. The tunnel, we already talked about turning radiuses, which we've already talked to the applicant about, um, in the back coming off the, um, alley. They're gonna have drivable curbs and behind the drivable curbs will be a drivable surface. Uh, that's mainly for, uh, trash trucks and also for our fires, fire protection or fire apparatus. We've done similar thing over to Grand View, uh, where their first, uh, cul-de-sac was smaller. And the topographics just wouldn't allow it, and so there, we have drivable curbs over there and drivable sidewalks. Um, so it's a, it's a good takeaway, uh, for safety, that we can get in there. It doesn't look like a drivable surface, but it actually is a drivable surface. Uh, happy to answer any questions right now or later, I'll be on until the end.
Great, thank, thank you very much, alright, we, um, we may have some questions for you a little bit later. Sure, with that, um, is Mark, oh, Marcus is back, yay.
And I'm back, I'll, I'll try again, I hope it's better.
Yeah, it seems better so far.
Is it, okay. Um, I appreciate what Don said that dovetails with several of our comments, um, but I started to say, uh, that we have a number of comments in the. Really don't affect site layout or the viability of the project, so I won't, uh, spend time on those this evening. We will point out the material and recognizable benefits that were identified, that were engineering related, are summarized in our report and have all been addressed. Those are listed, uh, so as far as the, uh, significant, the engineering comments that really have a potential impact on the site layout. Uh, this project has been a, a long time in the making, so the, there's been some changes. Uh, there since the original topographic survey, uh, was completed, uh, specifically Gran, Grand View Commons. So there's some updated information that's needed on the base plan for what is existing conditions now. That should be updated. Uh, I was, uh, identifying the right of way for Grand Street. Uh, that, probably the biggest item on related utilities for water and sewer is the house directly to the, to the south. Um, there's a shared water and sewer service, um. That's proposed to be removed as part of this project to accommodate this development, which will need to be reinstated for that. Uh, house that remains, uh, the plans don't address that, um, in, in the current state, so that, that will need to be. Um, identified on the plan where, where the, uh, new water and sewer service for the house remains, uh. Will be handled. The stormwater item, uh, the, 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 the project is proposing. Several different methods of dealing with the, uh, stormwater runoff, including previous pavers. Um, some green areas, the, the limited space they do have in, in green areas to infiltrate. And then, and then underground detention and then a restricted outlet, uh, to the Grand View Commons site actually. Uh, our comment really is just pointing out that, um. The applicant needs to provide a little bit more information, um, to demonstrate that the receiving sewer has sufficient capacity. Uh, which also, you may hear, uh, here referred to as a certificate of outlet, uh, so we're not necessarily saying that's an issue, uh, but just pointing out that that. As far as the, the site layout and the site dimensioning, um, really the only comment that we had as it relates to dimensions that. Needs a revision is the. Parking spaces on the south side are proposed, uh, sixteen-foot spaces, but, but there's only a five-foot. Directly adjacent to a five-foot, uh, walkway, uh, so in order to accommodate, uh, sixteen-foot reduced space length. Uh, a minimum of a two-foot overhang that's required, so those spaces would either need to be extended eighteen feet. Or the sidewalk, uh, wide to seven feet there, and it appears that there's sufficient width in the aisle. To, to gain that extra footage, um, they just need to, um, work with those dimensions in that area. And as Don had mentioned, we, we were looking to see the turning movements for both, uh, emergency vehicle access. Then also the, uh, refuse pickup to see how that. How that truck will, will navigate the site, um, Don mentioned, they, they have some mountable curve, they have some paved areas. That allow for the, you know, those vehicles to get in and out, uh, but just see that on the plans with the turning movement. And then the last item, uh, I think that. Needs to be addressed on the, uh, as far as, uh, the scope of the improvements that are required, um, is the. What, what improvements, if any, are needed and or proposed along the alley. By what, either the twenty-foot or the eighteen-foot wide surface. So they may need a little bit more topographic information to. On that alley, and then if there's any areas that met down, how that'll be addressed.
You're cutting in and out, Marcus.
Suddenly faded out.
Well, I'm done, so.
Alright, that's probably, I mean, your last comment regarding the alley, I think there's some.
They just need to show, they, they need to demonstrate what's there and what improvements are proposed.
Okay, alright, so that, okay, so, alright, so for Marcus, um, so we've had our staff, I think we covered all our staff presentations. Except, um, Michelle or Mike, were you gonna wrap it up now, or did you wanna have the applicant do their thing?
Um, I'll go ahead and do it and then give the applicant the time to make his presentation. Okay, I'm not gonna go over the stuff that, um, anybody else has already gone over, I'll just hit, hit the highlights for the, um. Um, clarifications. So, um, for the, for, um. So for the, for the DAFD with the twenty foot wide drivable surface. Don is right, an applicant needs to make a, make it clear that that's what they want. The PUD was approved with it. They've again put it on the plans. If DAFD wants something specifically in writing more than that, I'm sure the applicant will provide it. But the, the section of the city's code that has addressed this does, does allow. If there's an absence of compelling circumstances, the, the apparatus road has to have an unobstructed width of not less than eighteen feet. So I think we can get this thing worked out. As far as the paved alley, excuse me. As I've stated in the, in my review. I, we don't know which requirement this falls under for, for fire, whether it's a common or a requirement or a recommendation. But to require the applicant, and this is even more important, to require the applicant to pave the entire alley from Baker to Broad. It has the potential to be considered an impact fee and municipal, excuse me, planning commission knows that we cannot require impact fees, development impact fee. So we're going to have to weigh that one very carefully. Deviations from the standards and your preliminary approval, like Megan said, you will need to make a determination as to whether this plan is in substantial compliance with the previous PUD approval. As she said, the height is slightly more, but that was, that's basically the result of the clearance of the tunnel that goes, allows people to get to the get to the rear parking lot. Megan's already addressed the patios and it being open space. But in addition, those patios do address the separation between public and private spaces. That was, that was part of the PUD approval conditions. A tree replacement. The catalta tree that's coming down is a, is a very healthy mature tree that will require five replacement trees, even though that's a prohibited tree. Planning Commission has required that healthy healthy trees be replaced when they're being taken down. I think it's pretty clear, anything under utility wires shouldn't be tall growing trees. So the recommendation is to substitute out the three October Glory red maples for something that's lower growing, like the service berry or the red bud or the summer sprite linden. And that's something that staff can work with the applicant, but it would be a condition of approval. As Megan said, the street trees. There's four existing street trees, three are new, one's existing, that twenty-eight inch maple is not in good condition as the, the photo shows. So in addition to the the one street tree that she mentioned, the applicant will need to provide the replacements for the twenty-eight maple, or the twenty-eight inch maple, because it's a landmark. And if I'm not mistaken, that's five two and a half inch caliber trees. The PUD agreement, Megan did address that. The staff has provided a basic outline for the applicant. The applicant will need to provide that. It's a condition of approval in the recommendations. And you've got four determinations that basically summarize the things that Megan has said, the things that that I have in my review. And then you've got the conditions of approval. The one thing that I will address as far as the fire hydrant, and it may be a question for Captain Detling. In his review, he talks about documentation to identify the, the needed water flow for the, to protect the the development, that's the fire protection. If that is provided and it is sufficient, is an additional, is the fire hydrant truly needed then?
Well, under the current standards, if the building or what you're going to protect is suppressed, which this building is, then that can be waived. But they would have to demonstrate the availability.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And that is a condition of approval.
It says and/or, so yes.
Cool. Thanks. And that's all I've got for you.
Thanks, Michelle. If I have more questions for you as well. Okay. So with that, we've had our staff presentations, consultants. So would the applicant like to give us a little presentation background on your project?
I'm Jack Campbell. Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
I can put my face up there. I'm not sitting in the Starbucks overlooking Tower Bridge in London, but
That's okay.
I'm actually in Webster Township, so.
You can hear it. Okay. There you go.
Although I wish I was in the Starbucks overlooking the bridge. With me is Kathy Kyneth, our engineer for Macon Engineering. Kevin Rosenberg is with Jeff Scott Architects. He's also on this Zoom meeting and I'm with Marra for Campbell's Valley Company. We are asking for final site plan approval and PUD zoning approval this evening. And let me get to the, the, and it's been brought up before, where did the name Millennium Place come off? It just came up out of the air. We were tossing names around. We thought, well, maybe Grand, Grand Place or Grand Plaza, but then we thought, well, we've got Grand View Commons and we didn't want to be confused if somebody, if there was an emergency said, well, we're at Grand. Oh, yeah, Grand what? So we came up with Millennium Place. We're not married to that name. If somebody has another suggestion, we're certainly open to that. That's just been the name that's been dragged along and I've, I've named several subdivisions that I've developed and the name just kind of, just kind of appear. So having said that, we, we are asking for an eighteen foot width on the alley. And that's what was approved with the preliminary site plan. That's also allowed in the, when the fire code was adopted by the then village, now city in two thousand and six. I believe the total width of the alley right away is only twenty feet. And within that twenty feet, there are some utilities. So I think there's compelling reason to reduce that to, to eighteen feet, as we discussed at some length the last time we were here in June. And with that, I think I will turn it over to either Kathy Kyneth or Kevin Rosenberg from Jeff Scott Architects to go over some of the questions from your planner, OHM, fire department, Carlisle Wardman. So Jeff or Kathy, if you want to chime in.
Thank, thank you. So, yes, Kathy. Okay.
So to, to start with, I know Megan noted the parking lot tree, so five parking lot trees and that that was based on the total number of parking spaces. But the majority of our parking spaces are all underneath the building. We only have ten spaces that are actually outside in the parking lot. So we would like to respectfully request a waiver from that requirement. Since we do only have the ten spaces out there and there is a fairly large landscape island within that ten spaces where we actually have some bio retention and a tree planted. We did have some questions about the, the review we received from OHM. I think Marcus went through some of them. And maybe he can elaborate a little bit and give us a little more guidance on what he's looking for. I think the first one that comes up is this idea of the grading around the dumpster, the dumpster enclosure. We can, you know, add details to that, but the idea of eliminating that mountable curb. What Marcus probably wasn't aware of is that I had, had a conversation with Captain Detling about that mountable curb and the reason why it's there is to provide a surface that the fire truck could drive over to make that turning movement in and out of that parking lot. And also so that the garbage trucks can drive up on top of it to access the dumpster and then to back out and to have that concrete in front of the dumpsters so that we're not tearing up pavement or the, the alley. So I, I would appreciate if Marcus could give us a little more clarification on that. And then we had questions about the seven foot sidewalk that was being requested. And also the Grand Street driveway requirement to be twenty-five feet wide. So these are things that we had shown on the preliminary site plan that were approved that showed the five foot sidewalk and it showed a twenty-two foot wide driveway. We would like to keep it the way it was approved and not change it. So we'd like to have some conversation about that with why the twenty-five foot is coming up and why it's required. And are you looking for the twenty-five foot all the way through the tunnel or just in the drive approach leading up to the tunnel? I, I thought I heard Marcus say that we could leave the five foot sidewalks and make the parking spaces eighteen foot wide, which that's an easy solution for us to provide. We have the alley width that's currently twenty-six, just knowing that if we change the the parking space to eighteen foot long, then the, the driveway is going to end up being twenty-four feet wide, which is still, I think, an acceptable width. You know, the other thing with the alley, I think, just understanding when it says, the comment says all proposed improvements. And I will let Jack expand on this if he wants to, but our understanding is, is that we'll be providing eighteen foot wide gravel surface and that will be the extent of the improvements. So we just want to make sure that we're very clear that that's what's going to be provided and that it's not going to turn into a larger, bigger project with a lot of grading or disturbance to the rest of the, the people that use that alley. So those were our major comments. I'll let Kevin go on. I know we did have a question for Megan too about the light poles. We're not proposing any light poles. All of the lighting is on the building. So I'm not sure if that wasn't clear on the photometric plan or, or if she would like to, to comment about that a little more and have a little more discussion about that. Thank you.
Yep, I think Kathy covered most of them. I know the height of the building was something that was brought up. Our height of thirty-eight feet was what was proposed in the preliminary PUD and I believe what was approved. Thirty-five feet is the maximum height that the Dexter zoning ordinance proposes or sets. And then we had proposed thirty-eight feet. The thirty-nine feet, seven inches comes to just showing the height of the parapet and the highest point, but that wouldn't be included in our official building height. So that height hasn't changed since the preliminary. So we're able to include the height requested for the tunnel and the drive-through while still retaining that height that we had before. Kathy mentioned that the, we don't have any light poles in the site, but also mentioned related to the point one foot candles at the property line. We have a four foot retaining wall that prevents light from spilling over into the neighboring property, but right before that retaining wall, which I think is where there's a larger amount than point one foot candles is right next to the parking spaces. So to adequately light the parking spaces, some of which are handicapped spaces, and then also have the light drop off right there, we need that retaining wall that's right at the property line. So even though we're not at the point one there, we're not letting any spill over into the neighboring property, which I believe would be.
I just, Kevin, we had a fence, not retaining wall. We just had the.
Fence, sorry. Divided, yeah. And then I believe there was a question about the location of the mailboxes, which we have shown in the lobby. I think so we were directed, I think Jack was directed to the postmaster who directed us to the city and then back to the postmaster. So I guess we were just looking for some clarification on who would be, I guess, signing off on if the lobby would be an okay location for the mailboxes as they're proposed from the plan. So that's, yeah, that's the only additional items I had.
Thank you. Wow. We had a lot of presentation, a lot of information. Okay, Marcus, yes, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, if it's the appropriate time, I could respond to these questions. Hopefully that connection holds out. Our comment related to the mountable curb was really, we're, we're not against it. It was really just as far as the detail grading of that, if that can be made as gentle as possible, knowing that it's going to frequently be you know, the, the garbage trucks are going to be hitting. So if there's a valley gutter detail or something, just to lessen a curve can mean a lot of different things. So really just look for clarification, not suggesting that it be that, that the definition between the drive that's, you know, used by vehicles predominantly and the dumpster area slash paved radius to accommodate larger vehicles. You just want to keep that delineation, but just make that grading as smooth as possible to clarify that. As far as the, the walk and the parking lot dimensions, I, I think probably widening the spaces to eighteen feet is the easier solution. And the minimum aisle width is twenty-two feet, so you have room to do that. So I think that would solve that. You wouldn't need to necessarily widen the walk, although that would, that would be another way to achieve that. And then I will have to look a little closer at the, the twenty-five foot drive width comment and why that was or wasn't, and maybe Michelle remembers, but I, I don't. Why, if that was discussed previously, but that's specific to the throat of the drive width that the curb cut, not going into the site. So we'll, we'll take another look at that, but even if that is, it were to be the requirement going down to the twenty-two foot for the aisle width interior to the site would be acceptable. And then lastly, just to clarify what we meant by all impro, proposed improvements in the alley. We were just trying to capture that whatever improvements are necessary to achieve the eighteen foot wide gravel surface need to be clearly identified. And, and I would agree, our understanding is that that if there's any areas that are narrower than that, those improvements would include, you know, the appropriate work to widen that gravel surface. And that's all we meant by that, but just making sure that it's clear on the plan where that's proposed, if it's necessary anywhere. That's all I have.
Oh, thank you. I see a couple other staff hands went up. Megan, I think, and then Chief Detling, Michelle. Yes, Megan, your hand's up?
Yeah, thank you. I'll lower my hand. And then in terms of that applicant's request for clarification on the lighting plan. Apologize for the pole lighting comment. Do you see that they are all well mounted? What would be beneficial is on that sheet of the lighting plan, if the mounting height of those parking lot lights. So that is the fixture type. I think B. No, fixture type D. If those could be noted, that would be, and fixture type A, those would be very helpful. The other lights that you have, of course, recessed into the ceiling. And then I think where we were having some problems is on the photometric plan. It appears that where that wall is, there's high lighting levels and wasn't quite sure whether they were pleading over. So it just simply a note on that plan that there wouldn't be any where the fence is, there's no bleeding over into adjacent properties would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Okay, Chief Detling, you had something to add as well?
I did. One comment that now that I'm looking at my review, Brian, your review letter, I should have made a space between my comments and the statement of not approval. So when I did make the comment of alleyways, I was reviewing the, the daily trips of a hundred and twenty-four. If you go half, it's seventy-five. If you go thirty-seven, it's not going to take that long before that road becomes complainable. And that was more for the city of Dexter than, than this project here. As you know, the Dexter area fire department covers a significant amount of property that is protected by gravel roads. So gravel roads is, is an approved surface. So, and that's the only. So, and that's the only two comments that I have.
Thank you. All right, Michelle?
Okay, just a couple of things for you. Hang on one second, I've got to go back. So, excuse me. One thing I did forget to mention to you was reminding you about the effective preliminary PUD approval. It does have a requirement that once preliminary PUD approval has been granted, an applicant has 12 months. This particular plan was approved by city council July 8, 2019. There are two significant extenuating circumstances that delayed the submittal. The first one was the COVID pandemic. The second one was the clarification and resolution of DAFD requirements, recommendations, et cetera, regarding the third fire apparatus access road. That has been, once that got resolved, the applicant did make his submittal, but it is something that Planning Commission will have to make a determination. The determination is written for you in my letter, but I didn't want to forget to mention that to you. I think there was one other thing. I think there was one other thing. When it comes to the alley improvement with that, the alley is a 25 foot wide alley. Excuse me. Preliminary PUD approval did require the 18 foot gravel surface from that concrete approach to the western edge of the property. I echo Marcus's comments about making sure that wherever it's not currently 18 feet, you'll be expected to make it 18 feet. Excuse me, but that's not the only improvement that you are doing in the alley. We can't lose sight of the fact that one of the recognized material benefits is that improvement to the sanitary manhole, correct, Marcus? And just so that there isn't any confusion there. And I think that was it for clarifications and the one thing that I didn't address when I talked to you before.
Hey, thank you, Michelle. Okay, so we as a commission, we've got a lot of, we got a lot here thrown at us between all our staff consultant reviews and the petitioner as well. So so with that, we we do have a motion on our sample motion on our, what's like page 97. There's a couple of determinations we as a commission need to make as well. So of course, this this would be final. So if if it were to pass tonight, it would be the last time we would see it. We can always postpone. Of course, we could recommend an aisle postpone or move forward to city council tonight pending addressing the list of comments and outstanding issues. So with that, does anybody have a comfort level to make a motion at this time?
Matt, before you make the motion, do the determinations, please. I want the determination so that you can then bake them into the motion.
Okay, well. So so I guess, so basically we can go down through the list and we've got our three determinations here. The first was the.
Remember, we've got to add the plan being in substantial compliance with the PUD approval. That's in Megan's letter.
All right, so I'm looking at your page.
97.
97, so compliance with. Okay. Okay, so I get, so with the determinations, I mean, typically don't we roll those into the motion though, Michelle? Because I I don't know how if we're going to make a separate determination, we have to take a vote on that? Like sometimes we, I mean.
We separated determinations in another project before the motion was made, so.
Yeah.
I think in the future, what I'll do is I'll do a motion on determinations and then the motion on the final action. So as a motion on determinations.
We kind of have to make these as a motion to begin. Okay, um, so. We could so so having said that, so again, we've got four determinations that we need to make and we, before we get to our discussion. So there's there's three that are on the page 97. There's the additional one, which is in Megan's review letter, which Michelle just told us about, but of course I lost my place. That what page was?
97, Matt.
Well, I've got 97. Where's the extra motion, the the?
I wrote it in. It 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 just, it's you have to determine if the plan is in substantial compliance with the preliminary PUD site plan approval.
All right, so we'll just add that with preliminary site plan approval.
Correct.
Okay, so. We got that sorted out. Is somebody comfortable making a motion for determinations? We can make them individually as as a group, or if somebody feels comfortable moving those four determinations on page 97 with the additional one added. We can have those moved as a single motion. But again, we can always do them individually as well, because each one is, they are they are unique, so. Based on that comfort level. Take them individually if that would go faster. We got, oh, oh, hands are popping up. Okay, so I see Commissioner Roberts and then I guess Commissioner Helen Wise also had their hands up, but we'll. So Commissioner Roberts, did you want to make a motion or discussion?
I moved that the deviation from section 19.05. G to allow an extension of preliminary PUD approval warranted based on extenuating circumstances as cited in here herein should be approved.
Okay, is there support for that? Support wise?
Yes, support.
All right, so we can take, I think I'll just take, Carol, I think we'll have, if you're ready, we'll need a roll call vote on on these as well. Okay, so but is there discussion on, so again, what the first motion would be, would be to allow the extension for this preliminary PUD. So any questions, thoughts, concerns? No? I don't see any hands go up. Okay, so can we have a roll call vote, please, on determination number one?
Okay. Hill.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Carty.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, we have a determination number two. Would somebody like to make a motion on that? Oh, I see Commissioner Wise popped his hand up first and then maybe Commissioner Hill. You can get the next one.
Should a building height deviation from 35 to 39.7 be allowed as a result of the requirement by DAFD for the vertical clearance of 10 foot, nine inches per tunnel, which provides access to the rear parking lot? I'm going to say yes.
Okay, so that would be yes. Is there support? Support Marsh? All right, so any discussion on that item? And this would be the height, so to make it slightly higher, about four feet or so than what was originally approved? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please?
Okay, Phillips.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Carty.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, thank you all. Determination number three. Compelling evidence to support the need for the alley to have a 20 foot drivable width. Well, actually, shouldn't that be 18? Says 20, but isn't it 18?
The compelling, yes, you're right. No, unless there's a compelling reason to make it 20, it's automatically 18.
Oh, oh, it's the reverse. Okay.
So the determination is, has compelling evidence been provided?
Okay, so would somebody like to make that motion? That's compelling evidence. Two hands have gone up.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Move Roberts.
All right. I move that compelling evidence has not been provided to support the need for the alley to have a 20 foot drivable width. So it should stay at 18.
18, okay, so move move Roberts. Support. Support Marsh. Okay, any discussion? So this would, again, alley width to 18 feet? Do you notice?
So Matt, I have not yet got a request from the applicant to reduce it from 20 to 18. I realize it's semantics, but I've not gotten that request.
Okay, so we will want that. So again, Karen, if you heard that, you can change the motion or we will make sure.
No, I think we can recommend, or that could be a condition of approval for the overall.
Okay.
Matt? Does it have, does the chief or does the captain want it in writing? Because the applicant addressed that in his verbal comments.
It has to be like, it has to be in writing.
Okay, right. Okay, yeah, the applicant, and that is true. So we do know, it does seem to feel like the applicant is comfortable addressing it, but we can certainly add that as a, thank you for bringing that up, Chief. We can add that as a condition, absolutely. So I think, Karen, so your motion stands and I'm sorry, I just forgot who seconded that. Just did it. Somebody, who seconded that?
Kyle.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I'm confused on this for some reason, like what is the actual motion? Because I think there's a lot of like
Yes.
double negatives happening and like things that aren't in writing, so I want to make sure I know what I'm doing here.
Yes, I mean, what this would result in, if I'm not mistaken, would be allowing an 18 foot alley width. But I guess you're right, the way it's written is, that's why I was a bit confused the way it was written, because so we have to provide evidence for it to be 20 feet. So I guess we as a commission are saying that we don't feel that it needs to be 20 feet. The evidence wasn't overwhelming, so we're comfortable with it being 18 feet.
Okay, which I am, so I'm still confused if I'm voting like.
Yes, because I believe the way I know, wait, Ms. Rob, correct me if I'm wrong.
Can we try again?
Sure.
Okay, I move that the 18 foot alley, what 18 foot drivable width for the alley is approved in the previous application be maintained because compelling evidence has not been provided to support the need for a 20 foot alley.
That's clear, I believe.
Yes.
Is that clear? Okay, and Commissioner Hill?
I don't really have anything. I was going to clarify it for Karen, but I think it's pretty clear now.
Yeah, that was, okay, thank you. Okay, so if everybody's clear on this third determination, Commissioner Wise?
Does Kyle need to support that since it's been changed?
Sure.
Well, I still support. Yeah, I just want to make sure that. Yep.
It technically has changed, so correct. The the intent was the same, but you're you're right, the motion language did change. Okay, so I'm seeing if there's any other questions, discussion on this, seeing nobody else. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please? On the third determination.
Marsh.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Carty.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So a fourth determination is basically is the substantial compliance with the preliminary PUD approved plan. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes.
Is this plan substantial compliance with the previously approved PUD plan? So that's one of our items. That's the termination we need to make. So can we, if anybody want to make that motion? Okay, Mr. Hill?
I'll make a motion that the plan is in substantial compliance with the preliminary site plan, previously approved site plan.
Thank you. Move Phillips or support, support wise? Okay, any discussion on this? Questions, comments? Commissioner Wise, or no, or what, your hand went down?
Wait a little bit.
Okay. You know, I don't see any other discussions. So, all right, so this last determination would be, is the preliminary PUD substantial compliance with the, sorry, is this final PUD in substantial compliance with the preliminary one? So that is what would be going on. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Roberts.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Carty.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, thank you all. We did a big chunk. So now comes our real, the real meat. So here we go. So now we have the main discussion item. So there there, again, going back to page 97, we have some suggested motions which include a number, well, they include all of the conditions and conditions noted within the review letters. I believe, I I think all the determinations, right, because it's not including the determination we just made. I thought I wanted to double check that. Right, it does not. Okay, so having said that, do we have somebody, would somebody like to make a motion? We can start a discussion. I see Commissioner Wise.
So I'm going to do, based on the information provided by the applicant staff, CWA, OHM, and DFD, and reflected in the minutes of the meeting, and the planning commission moves to postpone AP 2020.21-20 PUD FSPR Millennium Plan final site plan dated June 16, 2021, until our next meeting to allow the applicant more time to address the comments cited herein and the following CWA, CWA review dated July 14, 2021, OHM review dated July 26, 2021, and DFD review dated July 22, 2021, and staff review.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wise. So there's a motion for postponement till the next meeting on the table. Do we have support? We have a second for the motion? Commissioner Phillips, is that a second?
Yes, support.
Okay, there's a support. All right, so right now we have a motion for postponement, so we are now open for discussion. So take it away, commissioners. We'll all put your hands up at once. I guess I'll I'll start with one question then. The, this was a question that was brought up previously was regarding the sewer leads and water leads for the adjacent house. Is there any, I mean, have you spoken with the, so I guess Kenneth or Mr. Campbell, have you spoken with that neighbor? I mean, is there a plan to address, to have those leads fixed? I mean, we don't want to approve a project that's going to cut off somebody's water and sewer, and I don't think that's the case, but I'd like to know what the plan is.
I'm not sure what your question is. Can you rephrase that, please?
Sure, the leads that go to the, there's leads that from an adjacent house that seem to go across into your development, sewer water and water leads that you're removing.
So the shared, the shared leaves, the shared leads with 7954.
With that house that's adjacent.
Okay, the only discussion that was was had was at the I believe it was the planning commission meeting back in 2019. So I will circle back to them. I know they have an issue. And I will get with, and I forget what their name is, but I will, I will talk to them again. And I will try to get to them prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, if you could, because that was one of my, a big concern from previously is is that, and and while I realize that's not necessarily your related to your development, but it but it is, and we want to, I want to make sure that we're not, these people know what what's being approved next to them, so. Anyway, so yeah, if you could please have that addressed one way or another to get a response from them before that meeting, because I I think it's pretty important to know. So Michelle, you raised your your hand?
So one of the things, if you look on page 93, I outline the the approval that was given by city council. city council, and the utilities as proposed are acceptable, provided by the applicant. There was the demonstrates infiltration of soils and removes and replaces the existing water and sewer lines on the applicant's property and the adjacent one to the south. And that was based on, and Jack, you should, you should remember this, the question was asked if that was something you were willing to do, and you had indicated verbally during the meeting that you were. The other clarification on the mailboxes, that was the thing I forgot earlier. The mailboxes, you, due to the location of the driveway going into and under the tunnel, the existing mailbox has to be moved, that's what has to be arranged with the with the post office, there's a new location for it, and should be shown on the plans. As far as your own mailboxes in the, in the lobby, that's fine, it's that relocation of the mailboxes, the existing one that has to be coordinated with the post office.
I did, let me talk about the postal boxes, I believe it's Margaret, is the post? Okay, I talked to Margaret several months ago, and she said she was going to contact you, Michelle, to discuss that, because she said the actual location is up to the city. So that's where I left it.
Okay.
I did, I did have a conversation with Margaret about that, and whether you talked to her or she reached out to you, I have no knowledge of that, so I think that's, that's something that perhaps we can't place it. It's something that's convenient for you all and the post office. And there, she was on board with putting our boxes in the, in the lobby, so she told me.
Yeah, that's not, the lobby, post office boxes are fine, I can reach out to Margaret, I know that there are specific specifications, and the last time one had to be moved, the, my recollection is the post office had to sign off on it, but maybe they sign off based on the city proposing where it's going to be, ultimately, that's going to be we'll propose it based on you relocating it, so.
In regard to the neighbor, and that's, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's, that's a good point. I will talk to, to the neighbor, and see if we can't make some coordination to get them a better location for the sewer water, because I think they're needing some backup.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
That probably wasn't a good idea, we didn't create it.
No, I don't.
I don't know how that happened.
So. I don't know how that would happen, two leads going to one, but.
So I'm sure they would hope that this project goes through, so that that property, but that's, I think that's between that property owner and us, and we'll, I'll initiate that conversation.
Yep, I appreciate that, Michelle's comment in here as well, I didn't notice, so. Other than that, I mean, I really liked, I liked the improvements, the tweaks, a little bit to the front architecture of On Grand, those porches, I think that's really cool, the lot, large window spaces in there, so that's that part's really, really neat, I think that'll be a nice addition there. But a lot of the other comments, I had some questions about kind of that sidewalk, but a lot of those have been discussed, and it sounds like if this motion goes forward, it would be postponed anyway, and would be brought back. My one comment about that sidewalk, but it sounded like making sure that there's adequate width, but it sounds like you're going to just enlarge the parking spaces, which is fine. Maybe one thing, just maybe add the bumper blocks or something, because you know, even with longer spaces, people are going to pull right up all the way to that sidewalk, till their tires hit, and then probably park there, and then there'll be like, two feet of sidewalk, so maybe, again, kind of a minor comment, but.
Yeah. I'll let, and Kevin address that one.
Thank you. So other, other commissioner?
Is it imperative that we come back next month?
Sorry?
Is it imperative that we come back next month, could be October, I personal thing, I've got a daughter getting married next month.
Oh, well, we we could, I mean, Commissioner Wise made the motion, we could.
If we if we get back to September, I would like to do that, but.
Well, we could put, I mean, we may be able to revise the motion, it, just to when you're, get your comments addressed, maybe, and then if they were ready for September, and not necessarily put in a specific date, or would staff want us to put it?
You have to put in a specific time for the, because it's a postponement, that postponement can, if, if say you say September, and Jack couldn't get in for September, you could make a motion to postpone again to the next month. But you do have to set an initial.
We'll try for September.
Okay, so we'll keep it as is, okay.
Thanks, Michelle.
Perfect. So with that, I think Commissioner Hill had the hand up first, and then Commissioner Wise?
I'm I'm probably, we'll, we'll vote a yes on this, but I'm uncomfortable. I wasn't around to discuss this in twenty nineteen. So all I know is what I hear tonight, and it seems to me that the first motion for approval pretty much stipulates that the developer and the engineer and everybody involved takes care of all of the outstanding issues, there's, is, is there, and even the, the few outstanding issues could be rolled into that. So as I say, I'm, my inclination would have been to approve that, the first suggested motion here, but I'm happy to go along with the motion to postpone, if that's the if that's the general consensus, I just wanted to be known that, do things to me, everything that we really wanted is here, unless I'm unless I'm not understanding it, that's all, actually, I just want to comment on that.
Oh, good feedback, thank you. Okay, Commissioner, oh no, your hand went down, Commissioner Wise, but okay, Commissioner Roberts, and then Commissioner Carty.
And my only question, and it's maybe for, I'm not sure who it's for, but it doesn't look to me like there, it looks like there's a lot of impervious surface in this plan, and I'm I'm wondering, is the driveway and the parking area, is that going to be, you know, not paved? I, I just, it just doesn't look like there's enough, I mean, when we look at sort of the percent of, you know, percent of coverage, that, you know, how much, you know, the maximum that you can have. If I'm looking at, you know, the stormwater, water management sheet, so it's page one twenty-seven in our plans, and it just looks like a lot, and I just want to be sure that's box has been ticked, since we've got such got really, you know, conscientious people looking at this stuff, I'm probably wrong, but it, it just jumped out at me, so. That's, I don't know, Marcus?
I mean, if there's any feedback on that, I mean, we could have as, as a point going forward, to make sure that, that, those figures are, you know, double checked, but I mean, I know that the open space is spread out throughout parts of the site, so it does, it adds up, but. Okay, thank you. Who did that confirm? Commissioner Carty?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Chet and say that I would be very comfortable voting for this, for approval tonight. I don't know if that changes anybody's mind, but I think we could structure the approval in such a way that all of the possible issues are accounted for. That said, if it's the board's preference that we put it off a month, obviously we can do that.
Okay, so we, additional feedback? Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah, I agree with Jim and Chet.
Okay, all right, we got some there, willing to go forward, we do have a motion right now that, for a postponement, that's been supported, so other discussion on the design, any issues that go along with that? If it were to, again, postpone, we'll have that, we'll obviously look back at it probably September, maybe October, depending when they get the revised plans back, but that's the motion on the table right now. Any other additional, oh yes, Ms. Hill?
Um, just one comment in regards to the stormwater, I believe all of this, I could be mistaken, but a quick look at the plans would suggest that all the the storm detention is underground, under the parking lot. So I assume the engineers got that figured out pretty well.
Yeah, and I think with the open space spread on the sides, and in that rear area there, and all kinds adds up in in the little pieces, rather than one big other open area, so that's why it looks a little more, but we can certainly have that confirmed, to address Commissioner Roberts' question about that. Okay, so there is, again, the motion right now, I think if I'm not hearing any other discussion, we will take a vote, a postponement, I mean, that, that's what will be on here, so again, if the motion doesn't pass, we can always propose another motion as well, if this does pass, then it would be brought back on the summer meeting. So seeing no other hands up or discussion items, I guess we'll go for, we'll call the roll call vote right now, and again, this, the most, the current motion, although there has been commissioners expressing interest to move forward with those conditions, right now it's for a postponement, so I guess with that, can we have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Yes, Carty.
Governor, no.
Okay. Phillips?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Healy. Excuse me, Hubbard?
No.
Wise?
Yes.
Hill?
No.
Roberts?
No.
Kowalski.
Yes. But that motion fails, so with that, do we have a new motion? Make a motion to approve, deny?
I'm sure.
Okay. Here goes. Based on the information provided by the applicant staff, CWA, OHM, and DAFD, and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds AP twenty twenty dot twenty-one through twenty PUD FSPR Millennium Place Final Site Plan dated June sixteen, twenty twenty-one, meets the requirements of Article X one X, and recommends approval to the city council, subject to the following conditions. Do you want me to recite all the ones that are listed here?
I think we can say conditions one through yes. Through ten, correct.
Okay, and in addition to the, the condition that the, the service connection to the remaining house be corrected, or however that wants to be stated. The, what else was there?
Got the deviations.
Oh, yeah, and including the, the four previously approved deviations. Unless I forgot something there.
That's it.
I believe that's got I think that covers it, Michelle, do you think we missed anything? It looks like my list was a deep.
I think you've covered.
Go ahead, mailbox issue? Isn't there?
No, I think that's been addressed, correct?
That's part of, that was in that list, I missed it.
You can, if you'd like to make a condition of approval of the relocation of the mailbox, and coordination with staff and postmaster.
Okay, including the condition that the, the, the public mailbox relocation be coordinated with the postmaster, and be included as part of this plan.
Okay, so move Hill, is there support?
I think Kenneth has a question when you're done.
Ms. Kenneth?
We have a conversation about the request for the waiver for the parking lot trees.
Oh, the waiver, did you include that? And that we don't, well, wait, do we know exactly how many trees, though, Michelle?
Yes, that was in Megan's, hang on one second.
In other words, it's already in the, in the motion, because it's part of the report?
Correct. So you, you need to make that, that waiver, that you would grant the waiver of the the five required parking lot trees.
So it's added in the report, but it's a separate waiver that we have to grant, right?
Correct.
So, okay, so.
Check to make that motion.
You would need to add that waiver of those trees?
Pardon me, yes, if you're, if that was a question posed to me, yes, had, including approval of the waiver to, in regards to the parking lot trees, unless Megan says that you can.
Yeah, Megan's raising her hand, so.
For clarification, I, I would rather say that would waive the requirement for the parking lot trees to be the ones shown on the final site plan here, rather because I, I think there are two that are shown already, or Kathy, is there one or two?
I'd have to look, Megan.
Yeah. So I think the cleaner thing to do would to be just to say that you would issue a waiver on the parking lot trees required to be those shown on the final site plan, that you're approving, those shown on the final site plan.
What Megan said.
Waiver of the parking lot trees required, and approving those shown on this final site plan. Configuration, okay. Everybody kind of straight on that, so, and basically, I, I, what that's doing, I mean, it makes sense, because the trees are underneath the building, I mean, not one in favor of ever waving, losing trees, but they're not going to grow under the building, so. Right. All right, so with that, we've got a pretty comprehensive motion, and I don't think we've had a support yet, so we have move Hill to approve with the conditions, is there support?
I'll support.
Well, I saw Roberts first, sorry, Jim. Okay, so discussion, so we now have a motion to approve with conditions.
Let's just vote it.
Okay, that's a comment, we'll go with that, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Yes.
Made a comment.
Okay, the beginning, Hubbard?
Yes.
Wise?
No.
Roberts? Marsh?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Carty?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay. All right, so that motion carries. All right, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so, moving forward to item B, the zoning ordinance update from the subcommittee, so, we have a little bit of information and summary in our packet, and Megan or Mike, or wants to give us a rundown?
Um, we met tonight, and we went over the used base districts, and there's some edits were given to us by the subcommittee, so the, we will take those, and those that were also submitted by everyone on the form-based districts, combine those, and present those two articles to the planning commission and the city council at a joint meeting that's upcoming, Michelle, I don't know if you want to say more about scheduling that?
So we were looking at maybe the fifth Monday of the month, but my understanding, if I remember right, and while, help me, if I misspeak, I think Jamie said, Jamie from city council can't be there, but I believe everyone else from council could.
That was me.
Oh, that was you, I'm sorry.
And the reason I can't be there, I mean, I think, what, this would be when, the thirty-first?
It's the, hang on just a second.
The thirtieth?
I think it's the thirtieth, while.
It is the thirtieth.
I might be able to take the, hold on, eleven, what time is, I'm going to be flying out of, back home from Anchorage that day, so I, let me look at my flight times, I may be able to be there, or take it from the airport or something.
Okay. Okay, planning commissioners, I need to know if you would be available Monday, the thirtieth of August, probably six-thirty-ish, six-thirty-ish for a virtual joint meeting with city council to go over where we are to date on the zoning ordinance update. It would be the first of three or four joint meetings between planning commission and city council.
Is there any pizza?
It's virtual.
It'll be virtual, Tom. I will give you virtual pizza.
Well, you know, our address is, they can just, I mean, deliver it.
Yeah, they have Grubhub, so, maybe that's something we can work out.
Let's, let's move the date a couple of days into September.
That was going to be the next thing, if we can't make it work on the thirtieth, it would be, what I'll end up doing is sending a doodle poll out to everyone, city council and planning, and it would be like we used to. and it would be like we used to, in person. And yes, Tom, there will be pizza.
All right.
What, what time would this meeting be?
It's either gonna be a 6:30 or, well, if it's in person, it'll be seven o'clock.
Yeah, Michelle, I can't do that. I'll be getting on the plane at seven.
Okay.
Commissioner Wise, do you have comment?
Well, I just want to let Michelle, I, I can do it, but I might be a little bit late that day.
Okay.
Does that, does that work?
The 30th may work. What I'm gonna do is I'm still gonna put a doodle poll out with the 30th and then a bunch of dates for September, and we'll just go from there and we'll figure out what works.
So, and then Michelle, is this gonna be, so with, with council, is this gonna kind of, like you said, a walkthrough of where we're at so far up to the certain point? Is this gonna be meant to be more interactive? Is, or is it gonna be more of a, kind of like?
I'll let Megan address that for you.
Yes, Matt, it will be more interactive. So we would want to update council and planning commission as to where we are in the process, but also then to give you all an opportunity to use the draft ordinances and to apply them. So likely we would ask you to work as individuals or in small groups to pick a site, come back and tell us what you could place there. And so it would be, you know, it, because these, this, as the subcommittee has said, this is a real shift in how you think about zoning. And so then being able to apply it and understand it, we feel is important as part for decision makers to kind of get their hands dirty and looking at it.
Okay.
But if planning commission. Yeah, and if planning commissioners have any ideas about how you think that could be best to do, we'd welcome to hear them. I think Michelle and I will be designing the session probably in the next week or so as we get dates together.
Okay, thank you. Because I think one of my comments was going to be also, when we were looking at the zoning, I was going to actually reach out to Michelle or you and say, maybe we could have like a separate planning commission before I found out, like, meeting, because it is such a monumental change that even, and I, I think I'm, you know, I mean, I know a little bit more about zoning than probably a lot of other people are on the table, but it's still hard to grasp all these changes. So I think it's really important to get us, yeah, that interactive. I like that idea because said even for me, I'm trying to go through there and see what I like and what I, and it's, it's, it's kind of overwhelming. So, and I don't know what questions I have until I do something with it. So, okay, awesome. So, thank you. All right. So with that, so Michelle, you're gonna send out kind of a doodle poll? Get the dates down. So I guess, do we, what do we wanna touch on tonight then? Or is this, I don't wanna push, I mean, it's getting late, but I still don't wanna push it off, but.
No, it's, I think you've got enough, the, the, the main points is, like Megan said, is we've got some final comments to compile, make those tweaks, and then come back and present with the joint group.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you guys for that joint meeting. That's awesome. Okay, so but I'm sorry, Megan, or what? So there's nothing else? Anybody have any other, sorry, Meg, you turned your camera off. Any other questions or anything for Megan on this one? Or anything on the zoning? Okay, you can turn your camera off, Megan. Thanks. Okay, so moving right along, new business, oh, item C, so election of officers. I let you guys all know last, last month or so, so we can do this a couple of different ways. We can, we have a nomination, we can do individual positions. We can nominate three. So right now, obviously, I'm chair, Tom Phillips, vice chair. We do have a secretary position that's open. So we do need at least one new member, maybe all three. So with that, I mean, I'll, I'll kind of put it out there. Like I said, we do need a, a secretary. I know Ms. Healy's not here tonight, so, you know, hey, but so I know she wouldn't necessarily, she's not gonna fight for it, but she wouldn't necessarily object to it. But there's others out there that may wanna be nominated or put up another name there. So with that, I'm gonna open it up for the commissioners again for, we can nominate individually or as a group. So that. Does anybody wanna be secretary? I guess, let's, does anybody wanna nominate anybody for secretary or be secretary themselves? It's exciting. Tom and I aren't there, you guys get to chair the meeting.
We wanna coup, this is the time.
And all the benefits, all the benefits that go with that.
Let's start with this. I nominate Matt to be chair again.
I second that.
Tom to be vice chair again.
I second that.
Well, okay, well, we will have to have a vote, but, but I guess if we can, thank you for those so far. And we do need a secretary. So. Somebody, we're gonna be secretary. Hill?
I nominate Karen for secretary.
I, Robert, secondly, decline.
Get a chest of second.
Right, gosh. What about for chair? Okay. Okay, so any other nominees for, for secretary? Tom? I'll put another name.
What are the duties, what are the duties of the secretary?
She's not here.
I will nominate Allison as secretary.
Wait, Kyle was asking what the duties were. Did anyone hear?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's just keep, keeping of the minutes, really?
No.
Actually, it's not. Carol does all that.
Minutes. So it's, it's really, it's third, again, it's third in line, basically, if Tom and I aren't available, or again, if there's a coup or we get wiped out or whatever. Yeah, they step right in. So did you make a nomination? What, wait, did some, did I hear somebody nominate Allison?
I, I did. I nominated Allison.
Second.
Oh, that's great.
Not only that, Matt, when I see her, I'm gonna tell her it was your idea.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do this again. So Jim, you nominated Matt to be chair. Are you also being the one nominating Tom to be vice chair? I thought I heard somebody else nominate Tom.
I.
Tom, and you seconded it, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, who seconded your nomination for Matt?
I have chat.
I did one, one or the other.
Yeah, chat did.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And Jim nominated Allison, Karen seconded it. Okay.
Okay, so I guess.
You're gonna have to make three different roll call votes unless somebody allows a friendly amendment for one person to make all three nominations and one person to second them off.
Or we can do three quick roll call.
Or you can do three quick.
All right, we're gonna do three, three quick roll calls, I guess. Carol, can you do?
You're gonna really make me type here when I put this all together. List all these names.
Okay, that's why I forgot. I'm like, wait, how's Carol on the phone? She's still on the, I'm sorry, I forgot, you're on.
I don't know why it didn't work, but it didn't.
Okay, so, so I guess can we have a roll call vote on the nomination of chair for myself? Kowalski?
Yes. Hill?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Thank you all so much. I appreciate your confidence, for what it's worth. And nobody else wants it, I don't know. So, okay, Commissioner, so now we need a vote for vice chair. So that would be Commissioner Phillips. So can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Okay, Phillips?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay. Moving right along, secretary position, Allison Healy was nominated. So can we have a roll call vote on that, please, with her, with her absent?
Okay, Marsh?
No.
Okay, Hill?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, thank, thank you all. So there's your position going forward for the next year. Thank you all. Okay, so that's it, I guess. Proposed business for Tuesday meeting. The zoning ordinance subcommittee will meet beforehand, although I may that's changed because of this joint meeting or not, but.
Um, that may change. We'll have to, we'll have to see.
Um, well, the amendment to the, oh, sorry, I was.
There are two, there are most likely two amendments to Grandview Commons coming. One is an amendment to the final site plan, the approved final site plan. And the second is just the amendment to the master deed to bring the third phase online.
Okay, interesting. And then, well, and then, as Michelle mentioned earlier, the tax amendment for the zoning, the small cell wireless thing as well, so.
Right.
Okay. So that's it. With, with that, we have item 11, which is citizens wishing to address the commission. If we have any citizens online, if you'd like to raise your hand and address the commission, you may do so.
You've got anybody, Matt?
Ain't no one? Perfect. All right. Then, item 12, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Vice? Port Roberts? All right, meeting is adjourned next month. We're, we're live, we're in person. We actually get to see each other. Wow. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Bye, have a great night.
Bye.